Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Mayor.
I'd like to call our meeting to order. Thank you, everyone, for coming. We'll move along as rapidly as we can. We have a rather lengthy agenda, but some of the items we can move through sort of quickly. The first item, of course, is consideration of our minutes from the Tuesday, February 2, and Wednesday, February 24 section. Sorry, I started off too fast. For the record, it's 7:00 PM, and today is Tuesday, March the 1. We have two sets of minutes to consider for Tuesday, February 2, and Wednesday, February 24. Does the Chair here motion the minutes be approved as they're written?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, the minutes being approved as they're written. Is there any discussion? There being none, all in favor, indicate. Someone saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. Then the minutes are approved. We've had no requests or citizen comments, so we will move on with the items.
Amber Alert.
Amber Alert.
Amber Alert. Okay.
It's not?
It's Amber Alert.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right. First item is a recognition of Fire Captain Jason Edwards by Fire Chief Randy Goodbrow. Randy, would you like to come to the podium and state your issues, please?
Mayor Street, members of Town Council, we're before you tonight to recognize Captain Edwards on the completion of his school at UNC Charlotte Fire Rescue Management Institute. Captain Edwards has successfully completed a fire rescue management program through UNC Charlotte Office of Extended Academic Programs. The program consisted of four three-day sessions over a five-month period. Topics included, but were not limited to, building and leading effective teams, leading with attitude, planning for major disaster response, the moral imperative of leadership, employee coaching for performance, public speaking and presentation skills, media relations, and conflict resolution. The completion of this program will better equip the captain to perform his duties and responsibilities in a more professional manner as both a division head and shift commander for the department. This program is one aspect to continue building a culture within the department that will provide the citizens of the town of Nashville and the Gully Fire District with a more professional, cost-effective, and efficient level of fire and rescue services. Congratulations to Captain Edwards on completion of this program.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We're very happy for you, and I'm sure the taxpayers are very happy that you're more equipped to handle any emergency.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
And the next item is consideration of requests for the application for a permit for the street event for the annual Nashville Bloomia Festival to be held May 4 through 7, 2016. This issue was heard in our planning, in our agenda meeting at the planning board last Wednesday night, and there's been no opposition to it. Does the Chair here motion we approve the consideration?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we approve the request for the Bloomia Festival. Is there any discussion? There being none, all in favor, indicate. Someone saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. Accordingly, it is done. And the next item is consideration of an ordinance permitting the text of the Town of Nashville Code of Ordinance, Chapter 18, Land Use Regulation, Section 18-444, concerning protest. This is also attached with the following thing concerning bonding requirements. And we had a meeting on this the other night, an agenda meeting, and there was no concerns on that. But there's been some questions come up since that time about what exactly is the logic behind this, because it's being driven by changes in state legislation. Could you help us with that, Brian?
Yes, sir. Of course, state law has changed, which is why we're doing what we're doing tonight. All I can tell you is that they're both related to development, so they're development-driven. Also, something else that's been a recurring theme in planning-related legislation over the past couple of years is about streamlining processes. But what I'd like to say is that it's not saying that you can't do a protest anymore. It just takes out the supermajority vote. Before, if a protest petition was properly filled out, which took only 5% of adjoining property owners within 100 feet of the rezoning piece of property, that it would take a supermajority vote to pass that rezoning instead of just a simple majority. So in our case, it would take a 4/5 votes instead of a 3/5 vote. But it's not saying that you still can't protest, because that's our right as Americans. So what they would need to do is they would still need to get us the protest two business days before the meeting, and that would be submitted as evidence or appendix to the rezoning, but it just doesn't change the way you vote. And so that's why we had to remove it, because the state, of course, retracted protest petitions.
So the logic behind this and state legislation is streamlining?
Correct.
Okay. And what about the bonding requirements?
Same type thing. The 150%, which is what the rule was, and 125%, the reason they changed, all I can tell you is that when you, when you need to bond a project, for example, here in Nashville, when you get a construction plat approved, you have five years to either build it or to get it approved and then get it bonded. And then, once you get it bonded, you have one year to do it. If you recall, Nash Crossing was our most recent one. The overage, the 50%, which is what it used to be, should be used for inflation, enforcement, or administration. But you also got to keep in mind, you're always keeping that capital tied up in that project until it's released or until it's built. So the legislation, also, this is development-driven, thought that 125% would still serve the purpose, but it also wouldn't tie up as much capital during a project. And so it's also development-driven and streamlined.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. With all that said, then, let's go back to item number C. Does the Chair here motion we approve the consideration of the ordinance permitting the text to change the interpretation of protest?
Second.
It's been moved and
Second.
Seconded, that we approve the consideration. Is there any discussion? There being none, all in favor, indicate. Someone saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. Accordingly, it is done. And item number D, consideration ordinance permitting the text of the Town of Nashville Code of Ordinance, Chapter 18, Land Use Regulation, Section 18-368, bonding requirements. Does the Chair here motion this also be approved?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we approve the consideration. Is there any discussion? There being none, all in favor, indicate. Someone saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. Accordingly, it is approved. We're down now to item E, consideration of a planning board appointment. Mr. Hassel, would you introduce to us the newest member of the Nashville Planning Board?
Would you like him to come up?
I would like for you to introduce him.
Okay. Mr. Dwight Jordan is in attendance tonight. If you recall, he was here at our planning board meeting last week to kind of see how the function and see how it, how it worked. We've had a good lengthy conversation, and I can tell you that he lives here in town, which is a requirement. He's also an interested citizen. He has a customer service background. He has volunteered in various roles in school systems in our area, and he calls Nashville home, and he is very much interested in helping our town grow. He's very much interested in being an asset to the planning board, and I'm looking forward to working with him.
Thank you. Mr. Jordan, thank you very much for your interest.
Thank you, sir.
And as the newest member of the planning board, welcome aboard, and we're looking forward to a long and esteemed career.
That's correct. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. If any of us can help you anytime, let us know.
Appreciate it.
And you live in the Westview Community?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay. Excellent.
I walk right down the street.
Okay. So you walk to work, right?
I walk, I can walk.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Mayor, we need to vote on this?
Yes, we do. We're getting there.
Okay. I'm just making sure.
Hold on. Excellent. Now that he's been introduced and everyone knows who he is, let's approve him. I don't think we need to step out of the room, though. Okay. Does the Chair here motion we approve the recommendation for the consideration of the planning board appointment?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded, that we approve the appointment of Mr. Dwight L. Jordan. Is there any discussion? There being none, all in favor, indicate. Someone saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. Accordingly, it is approved. Now you're legitimate. Thank you. Following the same amount of appointments, if you look under section F, there's a list of library board appointments for the ensuing year. Does the Chair here motion we approve that group? Also, it's pretty much a continuation of the group we've had before.
There's no new additions, I don't see.
No.
I might get motion, Mayor.
Okay. It's been moved and
Second.
Seconded, that we approve the library board appointments as listed. Is there any discussion? If there being none, all in favor, indicate. Someone saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. Accordingly, it is approved. The next item is consideration of fire relief board appointments. The fire relief board has been something floating inside the fire department for many years. We've just got the thing activated or mobilized, I guess, by getting it back into the way it's supposed to work with rotating membership. And we have two persons to be appointed there, Ross Strickland and Stanley Edwards. Does the Chair here motion we approve these two appointments?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we approve the appointments as listed. Is there any discussion? If there being none, all in favor, indicate. Somebody saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. Okay. Accordingly, it's done. You will inform them, Chief?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Item number H is consideration of a resolution in memory of Warren Evans. As all of you know, Warren Evans was a longtime mayor and longtime resident, and we have issued a resolution in his honor, which we'll consider for approval later after I read, as they all have to be read. And this will be framed and sent to the family. We've already got that arranged, I hope. Okay. Bear with me, this is sort of lengthy. It's a resolution to honor the memory of Warren Evans. Whereas, on behalf of the Town of Nashville, the Nashville Town Council wishes to extend our sincere condolences on the passing of Warren Evans. And whereas, the Town Council of the Town of Nashville wishes to acknowledge and express appreciation to Warren Evans for his dedicated service to the citizens of the Town of Nashville. And whereas, Warren Evans was a lifelong resident of the Town of Nashville and died on Wednesday, February 24, 2016, at the age of 95. And whereas, Warren Evans faithfully served the Town of Nashville as Town Commissioner and Cemetery Commissioner from 1955 to 1957, as Town Treasurer and Buildings and Grounds Commissioner in 1957, and later served as Mayor from 1991 to 2007. And whereas, Warren Evans exemplified the true meaning of dedicated public servant, having additionally served on the Nash County School Board for 12 years, serving as Chairman from 1968 to 1974, and having served on the Nash Community College Board of Trustees beginning in 1969 for 27 years, also serving as Vice Chairman for 14 years and Chairman for 11 years. And whereas, Warren Evans esteemed himself in the Town of Nashville business community by establishing Acne Cleaners in 1943, which has thrived over the past 73 years, and by his sincere dedication and substantial contribution to the welfare of his community. And whereas, Warren Evans earned the respect, admiration, and high regard of all whom he came into contact, and our community has sustained a great loss in his death. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council of the Town of Nashville does hereby express our heartfelt sympathies to his wife of 70 years, Hilda G. Evans, and their children, Carol Evans Gaye and Timothy Evans, and their families. Be it further resolved that the Town Council of the Town of Nashville takes pause in its deliberations, not only to recognize the tremendous loss, but also recognize the accomplished life of Mayor Warren Evans, renowned public servant, esteemed citizen, and a voted member of his community. Adopted this first day of March, 2016, with appropriate signatures and attestations. Does the Chair here motion to approve this resolution? We pass it on to the family?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded, we approve the resolution to honor of Mayor Evans. Is there any discussion? If there being none, all in favor, indicate. Someone saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. Okay. We will get this organized and send it on to the family. Correct. Okay. The next item is consideration, consideration of the North Carolina Department of Cultural Resources Records Retention and Disposition Schedule for Municipal Government issued September 20, I'm sorry, September 10, 2012, and its amendment stated August 29, 2013, and January 5, 2015. If you will look in your package over, under the Lilac tab, you'll see a letter from our town clerk discussing the issues of our records. And this document, this reference here is of enormous size, and she's copied only one copy, which she has in her office, but she's digested some of this down to what the municipal retention and disposition schedule of records is based, which is something we've never been part of before. And essentially, what it says, if you read the very fine print, that records can be destroyed when administrative value ends, and that's a matter of determination. Some things have to be kept forever, like electronic records and financial records and health records, those sorts of things. And we need to pass this retention schedule, this is not a resolution, is it? We need to pass a motion to recognize that we are in receipt of and will practice the municipal records retention and disposition schedule. Does the Chair here motion that we do so?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we approve this consideration. Is there any discussion? There being none, all in favor, indicate. Someone saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. Accordingly, we are in accordance with the regulation. Okay. J is a continuation of that, the consideration of Resolution 2016-06, Resolution Establishing Procedures for Handling Closed Session Minutes, which is also under the darker Lilac tab, which we have to, which we have to read. Let me read this, and then we'll discuss if we need to. This is a resolution establishing procedures for handling closed session minutes, which is something we've never done before. We got to meet, but I don't think we have a policy for it. Says, whereas General Statutes 143-318-10E provides that every public body shall keep full and accurate minutes of all official meetings, including any closed sessions held pursuant to General Statutes 143-318-11. And whereas, General Statutes 143-318-10E provides that minutes of a closed session conducted by a public body in compliance with General Statutes 143-318-11 may be withheld from public inspection so long as public inspection would frustrate the purpose of a closed session. Now therefore be it resolved by the Town Council of the Town of Nashville that pursuant to General Statutes 143-318-10E, all closed session minutes are to be sealed against public inspection immediately upon preparation. And it said sealed minutes shall be presented for approval by the Town Council during a closed session held following the preparation. Likewise, any revision deemed necessary by the Town Council should also be sealed against public inspection. Be it further resolved that all sealed minutes shall be reviewed at least biannually by the Mayor, the Town Manager, the Town Attorney, who shall by majority opinion be empowered to unseal and release for public inspection any closed session minutes for which doing so would no longer frustrate the purpose of having met in closed session. Adopted this first day of March, 2016, with appropriate signatures. Does the Chair here motion that we approve this resolution?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we approve the motion for the procedures for handling closed session minutes. Is there any discussion? There being none, all in favor, indicate. Someone saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. Okay. It is done. So, Madam Clerk, you will be so advised. Okay. The next item, item K, is consideration of a resolution authorizing disposition of real property as authorized by North Carolina General Statutes 168-274. And that is a resolution we have with the county to sell the old library building for cash and some property. What the arrangement is, the county's approached us about using the, buying the old library for one of their drug training programs, and they want to give us $100,000 cash for it, and they want, and also to give us a piece of property, which is the old book storage building right across the street from the Acne Cleaners place on Church Street. And they're going to demolish the old building on there, clean it up, and make it a usable lot. All this together should equate up to about $150,000 or so thousand dollars, which is sort of very close to the estimate that we got for it when it was appraised. So that's that issue. Now, we need to pass a resolution to relieve us of the real property. Let me read this. The resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Nashville authorizing the disposition of real property is authorized by North Carolina General Statute 168-274. Whereas, the Town of Nashville has received an offer from Nash County to purchase real property located at 202 South Austin Street, that's the old library location, for $100,000 to convey real property located at 122 South Body Street to the town, that's the place on the corner that everybody was talking about. Whereas, the Town Council of the Town of Nashville desires to sell real property located at 202 South Austin Street as outlined by a purchase and sale contract agreed upon by the Town of Nashville and Nash County, and authorized by North Carolina General Statutes 168-274. And now therefore be it ordained by the Town Council of the Town of Nashville authorizes the disposition of real property at 202 South Austin Street, adopted this first day of March, 2016, et cetera. And attached to that is the purchase and sale contract with all the agreements between both parties. And the issue, there's one thing of issue that we may want to be aware of, is that the buyer has the right to make improvements during the process of closing. But whatever they do there will not bother the sale. And also, they have 180 days to get the lot cleaned off that they will give us. So other than that, it's a matter of closing and passing money. Does the Chair here motion we approve this resolution?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we approve the resolution to dispose of the real property of 202 South Austin Street. Is there any discussion? There being none, all in favor, indicate. Someone saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. Accordingly, it is done. Okay. Item L, consideration for real estate purchase, ET Bass property located 400 South Body Street. This, we're going to hold until after our closed session tonight, because we've got some real estate issues we need to discuss, and we'll handle that after it come out of closed session. And then, item number M is consideration of ordinance permitting the text of the Town of Nashville Code of Ordinance, Chapter 24, Offenses and Miscellaneous Provisions. And what it addresses is smokeless tobacco. We've got smoking ordinances all over town. None of them includes this electronic cigarette stuff. So this is including the electronic vapor smoke, vapor tobacco into our documents. Does the Chair here motion, I said, Chair motion that we, as soon as we go. Chair here, motion we approve this?
Second.
Is there a second? Okay. Is there a second?
You don't have to read it out loud.
I'm going to read it. It's sort of lengthy.
Well, I mean, if you don't have to, that's all.
Okay. I can read it. Okay. All right. We just read the resolution. This is an ordinance amendment, which we also do. It deals with, okay. An ordinance permitting the text of the Town of Nashville Code of Ordinance, Chapter 24, Offenses and Miscellaneous Provisions. Whereas, the Town of Nashville has an adopted municipal code containing regulations pertaining to the offenses and miscellaneous provisions. And whereas, the Town of Nashville is committed to providing a safe and healthy workplace for all town and all town facilities for its employees, and a safe and healthy environment for the visiting public. And whereas, the Town Council of the Town of Nashville finds and declares that in order to protect the public health and welfare, it is in the best interest of the citizens of the town to adopt an ordinance prohibiting smoking and use tobacco products in all town buildings and within public parks. And whereas, Article 23 of Chapter 130A of the North Carolina General Statutes authorize local governments to adopt regulations prohibiting use of tobacco in public places. And Article 8 of Chapter 168 authorize local governments to enact ordinances regulating conditions detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of their citizens and the peace and dignity of the town. Now therefore be it ordained by the Town Council of the Town of Nashville that the Town of Nashville Code of Ordinance should be amended to reflect the following changes through Chapter 24, Offenses and Miscellaneous Provisions, Section 2436, Smoking and Use of Tobacco in Public Places, by adding Section 2436, Smoking and Use of Tobacco in Public Places. Section 2436, Smoking and Use of Tobacco in Public Places. Definitions, for the purpose of this section, the following words shall have the meanings respectively ascribed to them, except where the context clearly indicates a different meaning. And smoking means inhaling, exhaling, burning, or carrying of a lighted pipe, cigar cigarettes, or other combustible tobacco products, including the use of e-cigarettes. E-cigarettes means any electronic oil device such as one composed of heating elements, battery, or electronic circuit that contains or delivers nicotine or any other substance intended for human consumption. Smokeless tobacco means any product that contains cut, ground, powder, or leaf tobacco is intended to be dipped in the oral or nasal cavity, including, but not limited to, snuff, chewing tobacco, dipping tobacco, and dissolvable tobacco products. Tobacco prohibited in municipal buildings. It shall be unlawful for any person to smoke or use tobacco products in any building or facility or portion of a building or facility now or hereafter owned, leased, operated, occupied, managed, or controlled by the town. Tobacco prohibited within public parks. It shall be unlawful for any person to smoke or use tobacco products within any or all public parks owned or occupied by the town. And tobacco prohibited in municipal vehicles and equipment. It shall be unlawful for any person to smoke or use tobacco products in any vehicle now or hereafter owned, leased by the town. And the penalty for the violation of this section shall constitute an infraction punishable by a fine of not more than $50. Adopted this first day of March, 2016. Does the Chair here motion approve?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we approve the resolution, which is, of course, going at e-cigarettes. Is there any discussion? There being none, all in favor, indicate. Someone saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. I read myself a horse. Okay. Manager report, Mr. Raper?
Thank you, Mayor. A few things, issues, and events and things coming up I'd like to make the Town Council and the public aware of. We'll be having a strategic planning meeting with myself and Town Council on March the 18th in the conference room at Town Hall. We have an upcoming Safety Committee meeting, which will be on March the 9th at 10:00 AM.
What time is the strategic meeting?
The strategic meeting, 9:00 AM.
9:00, okay.
Yes, ma'am. On Thursday of this current week, the Chamber of Commerce at Nash Arts will be having their Distinguished Citizen Program at 6:30 PM. We are continuing to install water sewer, water service lines in the Park Avenue and Regency Drive areas. For spring sports, where registration is quickly coming to a close, our enrollment numbers are on par with last year's spring sports numbers. We are continuing to pursue a downtown weather cam. We are in a partnership with Nash Community College and hopefully the North Carolina Department of Transportation, WRL, and that we have recently conducted a field visit on that effort. We've discussed a municipal service district with the Chamber of Commerce. We are currently in the process of drafting a municipal service district report, which we hope to include in our strategic planning meeting. After much effort, our sidewalk project is finally underway and has begun, and courtesy letters to property owners have been distributed. Austin and Washington Street, Austin and Washington Eastern Drainage Pipe is being installed as we go along. And on September the 17th, we are hoping to have a color run at Glover Park. So we're in the process of trying to plan that event.
A what kind of run?
A color run.
And?
Sir?
And what's a color?
What is a color run? A color run is something that's become popular, where people run like a 5K, and at different points, they'll have different staging grounds where people throw colored paint or powder on somebody to kind of
Well, I don't think I'm into pop culture. Go ahead.
This is our first color run.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Back in my time, we called that streaking.
You ain't.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
We are working with Parks and Rec and Nashville Elementary School to have a 5K on September the 10th, based on our previous meeting of having the elementary school come out. Parks and Recreation is also working on updating their master plan, which will enable us to be more competitive when seeking grant funding in the future. We have finished the initial project at West Nashville Commerce Park and have remaining IDF funds. These funds are dedicated to our project and should be utilized for infrastructure installation. As discussed, the remaining funds will enable us to extend the Forest Main to Gravity at Sixth Street, and any additional funds will be used to extend water lines in the project area. In our police department, we launched our Hope Initiative on February the 9th. We've so far, as of tonight, we have four participants in that program, and 22 people have come up to be volunteers. We've had training going on all day to get people to assist with this program. People have had experiences of past drug use, individuals who have had family members who have had heroin addictions, and also individuals who run support groups and treatment and treatment centers themselves. And our program's been very successful. We've had very positive conversations with media officials, probation and parole of North Carolina, including their director and two division administrators, assistant administrators. And I had a productive conversation with Roy Cooper as well, regarding this program. We also conducted an interview myself with our police chief, a program we're calling Talk of the Town at Nash Community College, where we're putting a little video series together to highlight issues going on within the town and our community. That's all I have, Mayor.
That is?
Yes, sir.
Anything else?
That's all.
Got a very aggressive list there.
Yes, sir.
I'm all for it. Okay, council comments. Mr. Taylor?
Mr. Ripper, you just mentioned about a meeting we had in March the ninth. What was that meeting?
March the ninth, that's for those on the Safety Committee.
Safety Committee, okay.
Yes, sir.
Other than that, no comments, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Taylor?
No comment tonight.
Is that it?
I would like to welcome Dwight Jordan to the planning board. Thank you so much for your participation.
Thank you, Reese.
Ms. Coleman?
Yeah, also, the first congratulate Jason, and the council members, you know, certainly love when people are doing things like that in our community. Mr. Jordan, you know, I'm looking forward to seeing you on the planning board. You're taking my spot that I used to have on the planning board for Town Council, and so I hold it dear to my heart. I know you'll do good after talking to you.
I've got some tub shoes.
Oh, yeah. And, you know, I really appreciate, you know, you know, went to the funeral service for Warren Evans this past, this past Saturday. And, you know, I didn't know him as well as some of the council members, and people in the community knew him, but just reading the things that he's done in the community, and the legacy he's passed on was certainly very, very commendable, and certainly, you know, the definition of community public servant. And so just, you know, honor my, you know, to honor him, just like to second what we said earlier about his life and everything.
Yeah. Warren was very much interested in this town. This was his whole life, and making money, and keeping money.
I was saying, and not spending.
Yeah. Those guys.
Mayor, I also like to, she just reminded me, Chamber's doing First Friday Coffee this Friday, so anybody who would like to come out, seven-thirty this Friday morning at the Nashville Exchange.
Nashville Exchange, first, okay, First Friday Coffee. Okay. There's another date I need to speak to you about, but not related to this, so don't let me forget it, please. Okay, we need a motion now to go into closed session for two items. One, to talk with our attorney about issues with the client, and also with real estate. The Chair here motion we go into closed session.
I may.
It's been moved and seconded, we go into closed session. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor, indicate, so we're saying yes?
Yes.